And we just pray that you would please help us as the administration to be able to clarify some things and communicate clearly. Pray that if there are any questions, that you will help us to get those out on the table and to have a good discussion about that. And Father, we just ask that you would please guide us in this difficult process that we have of trying to get a new school year started amidst a pandemic. I commit this to you in Jesus' name. So just a couple of quick things. The goal of our meeting tonight is to talk about how we're going to be doing school this year. And you know, as you know, this is based on what we know at the moment. Things change and things might change quite a bit over the course of the semester. That's in Lord's hands, but we're making the best decisions that we can based on the information. Now, we budgeted an hour for this. And you'll hear from our head of school, Mr. Helwig, and from each divisional principal. And they're going to share with you some important information about how we're going to be doing school. We've automatically set the the settings for the meeting so that everybody is muted. We had some real issues this morning of a lot of sound feedback and background noise, and so we're going to keep things muted. If you have a question, we would welcome those and you can just submit those to the chat box. And then at the end, we'll have about 15 minutes at the end. We'll field those questions and try to answer everything that you might have. So with that said, I will now turn it over to Mr. Helwig.
Thank you, Brian. I want to start by saying thank you so much for all of your support that we have felt as an admin team. Your prayers and encouragement have been extremely helpful for us as we've navigated through this unique time. And I want to, just as a bit of introduction, kind of share a little bit about our thoughts and about our process of which we've used to come to the decisions that we have. So I'm going to share my screen here. I'll start our presentation. One of the things that has been extremely helpful for me as we've been thinking about the next school year is that even though things have changed and there's some uncertainty, we still hold to our core values that we have as a school. And when I think about the opportunity that we still have to interact with students, to teach them, to really reflect on the purpose of what Faith Academy is, those things haven't changed. And so that has been an encouragement to be. It will look different. There will be some differences this year, some unique challenges. But for me, what's been helpful is that we still have a calling to do the work that God has asked us to do. So as we look at our core values, we still are involved in the Great Commission partnership. We still have a passion for participating in that. We still and have kept a focus on excellence in education. We're committed to best practices with that. We are learning what best practices are in a distance learning format, and those are the things that we continue to strive for. We're dedicated to gospel integration. This permeates through everything that we do in and out of the classroom. So when we think about interacting with students, this is still very much a part of our focus as a school. And then we are still a multicultural community, and that's one of the unique and rich aspects of our school. So that, like I said, has been an encouragement to me to remember that, to keep that in our focus as we move forward. If we look at kind of the process that we went through as an admin team, I mean, we actually began these types of discussions in fourth quarter as we were figuring out how to end the year well. We started planning for the next school year. And one of the things that I asked our team to think about is how can we make a difficult situation, turn that into a good situation? And what can we kind of define as what can we do to make the most of this situation? And from that, as we worked through that process as a team, that's how we really developed our guiding principles, the things that we hold to, the things that will help us as we make decisions. And we also looked at the great feedback that we got from our staff and from, you know, from our parents and from our community. And then from that, we use those to help guide our distance learning plan. So just to kind of review what our guiding principles are, and I did share this somewhat of the head of school updates. But I just want to kind of highlight some of the important things about that is we do value the health and safety of our students and our personnel. And that has been definitely a part of what we've looked at in decision-making. Our health office has been extremely helpful in guiding us through that process. And as we look to the future of returning to face-to-face eventually, the guidance from that office is going to be extremely helpful as we look at safety. We also respect the Filipino government and look at the guidelines that the Department of Education has set for us. And one of the things that we look at is determining in what ways do those apply to an international school? And so those are some of the questions that we ask. We want to support our families as much as possible to allow them to continue to do their work and ministry. We really value the student and teacher relationships, and you'll see in the plans that are laid out by each division. That's very clear about focus that we've had in our planning. We value clear communication. And that includes the frequency of which we communicate and the clarity of which we communicate. And we value the whole child, which includes the social, emotional, academic, and spiritual health. And we want to continue, we value the continuity in our educational program. So as we plan our distance learning kind of policy or procedures, all of that is gearing towards making sure that when we are able to go back to face-to-face, that that is as seamless as possible and that we are able to continue the educational program that we have in a seamless way. So those are the guiding principles that we set forth in terms of making our decisions. One of the ways that I want to just kind of emphasize and that continue with the communication, I will continue doing the head of school updates, which now are also posted on the website. And if you haven't seen that yet, that is one of the areas in which we will continue to provide updates and information as we move forward and also sending out frequent emails. As we, after we made the decision to move to the distance learning format for first semester, one of the things we sat down and talked about some general decisions that we wanted to make sure we put into place for each of our divisions. And this is, as I said before, really based off of feedback that we've gotten from our teachers, from our community. But it's also based off of information that we've been looking and researching in terms of what is best practice. And so the first bullet point there is instruction will be asynchronous, so it won't be live. That gives some flexibility for students, and you'll see how that plays out in the plans for each division. But there will be regular synchronous interactions with teachers. And that is the piece that wanted to emphasize the whole child, where we want to make sure that we are checking in with their students to see not only for their academic purposes, but also to address the social, emotional, and spiritual well-being of our students. So we definitely wanted to prioritize the synchronous as well. We are, because we have more time to prepare and because at the moment there are less restrictions given on us with the quarantine, we are going to work to distribute print materials to our students so that they're not always on a screen and are able to do work that is not connected to a computer or Chromebook or a device. And we will kind of explain the process of how that will work as we get closer to the school year. The main tools that are going to be used by each division, elementary will use Seesaw and Zoom. Middle school and high school use Google Classroom and Google Meet. There will be other tools that are used by teachers, but those will be very, they will be used consistently across classrooms. And then we also want to hold parent and student training sessions before school starts and continue to provide guidance through the semester. One of the things we looked at and we kind of reflected on from our having to go into fourth quarter quickly is we didn't have time to really prepare the community for that. And now we have given, we have the time to do that. So we, before school starts, we'll make sure that we hold those sessions. And part of that will be just kind of going over the tools we're going to use, but also providing guidance of how to be a successful student in a distant learning program and how to be a parent to help students during that. So that is a focus that we are going to have. So I'm going to pass it on to Mrs. McKay, and she's going to talk through the elementary school division.
Great, thank you. And thank you, parents, for joining us today. Wanted to just express my appreciation for the feedback that you've given us as principals and as a school. And we've been able to use that feedback as we try to structure our learning, distance learning protocol for this coming semester. So just wanted to start with giving you a bit of an overview of the school day for our kindergarten through grade five. The plan is that we will start a bit earlier than we did fourth quarter. We did get some feedback from parents saying, you know, my kids are up and ready. And I think the tendency for younger ones is that they're ready and get their best learning done early in the day. So we're going to be starting our school day at 7:30 and then plan is that they would be able to finish their work by 2:30 in the afternoon. For our pre-K students, their schedule will be very similar to if they were here on campus. So Tuesday through Friday, 7:00 AM, 7:30 AM, excuse me, to 11:00 AM. And that will not be the entire time. They will not be on screens. But we're trying to give that time framework to know that that's when teachers will be available. And that would be the time period that different Zoom meetings would be scheduled. We know that especially younger children thrive on having structure and routine. And so to assist you in building that structure and routine into your school day, into your child's school day, we will be sending daily schedules, weekly schedules for the students that will include specific times that they will be meeting by Zoom with their teacher. It will also include suggested timeframes for each of the subjects that they will be learning. Our mornings, which would be 7:30 to noon, will focus on the core subjects. And we plan to start the day with a live Zoom morning meeting with the entire class. Now, we are, we are going to have to work a little bit to stagger those slightly. Last quarter, we had them all at different times, and they were quite short to be able to fit into the timeframe that we had. So we're going to work to figure out a schedule that will allow students to start as close as they can to that beginning time and yet still allow families that have multiple kids to not have conflict with bandwidth and devices. The morning time will also then consist of students watching pre-recorded mini lessons and then doing activities that will be given to them by their teachers in those core subjects. After a lunch break, the afternoons will be time for students to do their Bible activities as well as the special classes. And many of those activities may be able to be done as a family, similar to what they were fourth quarter. Our lesson delivery, as I said, will be primarily through these pre-recorded mini lessons that will allow students to review the lesson, replay it again. If they're not understanding something, it also will allow them to do that asynchronously in case they're having difficulty with internet. They're not going to miss that key instruction because it will already be recorded. Another thing that we value is that that writing by hand, we know that strengthens the learning process. We also know that too much screen time is not healthy for brain development. So much of the daily activities are going to focus on hands-on learning, writing with paper and pencil, and reading print material as much as possible. We plan to send home weekly packets of both print books and other learning materials that the students will use. It might be some math manipulatives. It might be math, a math workbook for them and other things. We will have those available weekly for us to pick up at the school or we can arrange delivery through the school. We're still working on some of those details. If your family's not in the Philippines, you're not going to be able to receive those weekly packets. So I'm going to ask you to connect with me for those adjustments regarding those learning materials. We'll work out a plan for how you're going to get books and we will make available to you the PDF file so that you can print those as well as if we need to make some adjustments depending on time zones. But we really do value that time with the whole class together, so we want to make sure that that can work for you. And that's another reason that we have scheduled our start time a little bit earlier is because we know that we do have some families that are in North America and connecting at 7:30 in the morning as a whole class will make it more doable for them as well. One of the things that I do want to emphasize is that even though the lessons are pre-recorded, our teachers are committed to connecting with students throughout the week. And that will be either in their morning meeting, but then there will also be small group times as well as individual conferences for teachers to reteach as needed, to assess where students are, as well as to check in on how they're doing with their social, emotional, and spiritual health. As was mentioned by Mr. Helwig, we will be using Seesaw for schools. The teachers last year used Seesaw. We are upgrading. We are purchasing the school plan, and that will allow us to utilize it even more. We can add more teachers to a class so that the specials teachers can post in that same class so that we will have all of the instructions and the learning activities on that platform. We will not be utilizing the learning plan format that we did last year. And we will also be providing opportunity for you to receive some training in how to use Seesaw, both Seesaw for your child as well as your family Seesaw account. And as was mentioned, we will also be using Zoom as our primary platform for video conferencing and connecting with the students. There are some technology requirements that we would like you to be aware of. All of the elementary students will need access to either a laptop, a desktop, a tablet, or a mobile device that has a camera and a microphone. And that is because we want to be able to have that interaction with their teacher as well as interaction with their peers during that morning meeting or small group time. If your child is in grades three through five, they will also need to utilize a keyboard. They will be doing a little bit more as far as some of their work may need to be typed using a keyboard. And that is extremely difficult to do with just a cell phone. So if you do need to, if you need a Chromebook, those will be available again from the school for you to check out on an as-needed basis. And we will give you more information about how we will facilitate that as we get closer to the start of school. Your internet access does need to be strong enough to do video conferencing as well as to be able to stream or download those teaching videos. And I realize that internet can be spotty sometimes here. And so we just want to encourage you as much as you are able to, to make sure that you can try to have the strong enough internet connection that you can. I've already had a few questions that either we've thought of as an elementary staff or have been asked of me. So I'm just going to answer a few of those now, and I'm sure there will be some later, which you can put in that chat box or feel free to email me at a later time. So the first question is, what if my child cannot attend a scheduled Zoom session? As I mentioned, the Zoom sessions, we're expecting all the students to attend. They're designed for that development of relationship between the teachers and students. And they're also the primary means for us to promote interaction among the students. So if your child is unable to attend a session due to illness or your internet has dropped or there's an emergency, please contact your child's teacher to explain the situation. We will be recording Zoom sessions so that if something has come up, that you will, your child will be able to view that later. Another question is about chapel, and we do plan to have chapel weekly. We will have a live chapel service. It will be probably only about 30 minutes. But we do want to have one way that the whole school can connect together as an elementary division. So we will be having chapel service on Friday mornings through Zoom. And along with that, the question is, what will Fridays look like? Friday mornings, as I said, we will have our chapel live. And then the rest of the morning will focus on activities that promote reflection and consolidation of learning. So students will be working on practicing their math fluency. They will be doing some independent reading and writing as well as reflecting on their weekly goals. But there will be no new specific lessons related to that, no new content for them to learn. But it will just be a time of them thinking about their learning and setting, thinking about their goals and setting goals for the next week. There will also be a time on Fridays set aside for Zoom meetings with the specials teachers if needed. Next question is about specials. Will the specials be optional? And the expectation for this semester is that all students will complete those learning activities provided by the specials teachers. These activities are designed to help students to stretch and grow their brains in different ways than they would just through the regular academics. And we feel that they are a valuable part of your child's learning and education. However, if you find that your child is struggling to get through the day and get their work finished, and they need that afternoon to complete some of their work from the morning, then please contact me and we can discuss some adjustments to those expectations as far as their participation in those special activities. What supplies will my child need for distance learning? The school is planning to send home an initial packet of materials for your child. It will include things like pencils and notebooks and white bookmarkers, pens and glue and colored pencils, the things that we would provide for your child in the classroom. We're going to send home individually as well as some non-consumable items, including a dry erase lap board, small pencil sharpener, ruler, things that your child will need to be able to do the activities that are being asked of them. Any of those non-consumable items, we will ask you to return to school at the end of the semester. What will you need to provide? We're going to ask parents to provide some kind of a pencil case or box to store their child's school supplies as well as a good pair of scissors. There may be some other supplies that the specials teachers will request, such as a ball, jump rope, and tennis ball for PE. So we will communicate that to you as we find that out and it gets closer to the start of school. Thank you. Again, if you have other questions, please put that in the chat or you can email me directly later. I'm going to turn it over to Hans Kolumrender, our middle school principal.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, everybody. My name is Hans Kolumrender, and I'm glad to be your students' incoming middle school principal, even in a more challenging situation that we're in now. I would like to walk you through what middle school online learning or distance learning will look like in four parts. The nuts and bolts of the program, the schedule, the academics, and the communication and community. So first, the nuts and bolts. The school day will be from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and then from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM, there's office hours. And these hours are somewhat flexible, so it's depending on your students' preference and need. If a student is an early bird and he wants to start earlier, he can. Then we will work with odd and even weeks. So there's a sort of a two-week cycle. Every other week, the classes will look the same, and the week after those weeks will also look the same. There are three subjects per week, and the Fridays are always the same. So the three subjects will run from Monday through Thursday, and then on Friday, it's the same day. The week after, you have three different subjects, and then the Friday is the same again. On Friday, the students will have advisory and PE, which is according to a workout schedule that is provided. We have some extra reading time planned in and catch-up work for if a student has not finished yet his work from the week. He can use the Friday to finish up. We offer the electives again, but if you're familiar with middle school, we used to have a morning elective, usually the music block, and an afternoon elective. We have pulled those together, so students will choose only one elective from either a music class or one of the other electives. The traditional music classes as we know them, like band and strings, are not offered at the moment, and choir. But we will be offering a general music class for the students in grade seven and eight. The band and strings students who would like to continue to practice their instrument may opt in for extra lessons after the school day with Ms. Lingan Hall or Mrs. Sun. And then the students choose one elective in seven and eight. I've called it electives as well in grade six, but basically they're doing computers, so it's not really an elective. Students sign an honor code and a student protocol to see what the expectations are of students and what students can expect of the teachers. Then the Fridays, as I said, there's an advisory class that is really focused on intentionally connecting with each other for community and relationship building, a focus on spiritual formation, asking the students like, how are you doing? How was your walk with Jesus? But also having fun, just connecting with each other. Hey, what have you been up to this week? Maybe do a fun game or other activities to really sort of solidify that community element still. The PE will be given through a workout schedule, so students can, after school every day or maybe three times a week, choose a level of exercise, what they want to follow and do, and then check in with a teacher on Fridays for some extra instruction or encouragement about their PE work. There's some extra reading time for the English classes. If they're going through a book and a teacher wants them to read a chapter or two in the book that they are working through, then that could be done during that time on Friday as well. But no new work is assigned that day. And then, as I said, the catch-up time for students who still have some work to finish up from that week can do that on the Friday as well. So here in this slide, you can see what that looks like. So in the one week, students would have math, social studies, and science. To give you an idea about the times, about 90 minutes per day, they will be receiving work for that. And then after 2:00 PM, there's office hours, which means that the teacher is still available if students have questions or need clarification, and I'll get back to that in a minute. You also see the Google Meet in that little orange font. So teachers can meet with a student on that assigned day for that subject only. So on Mondays for math and Tuesdays and Wednesdays for social studies and on Thursdays for science. And then the Friday, you see the same topics again. So that's the first week. And then the next week, the other three subjects are there. The English class, the Bible class, the electives class for seven and eight, and for grade six, the computer class. And then again, the office hours at the end of the day, and the Fridays again, same as every week. Okay, then the academics. The teacher posts the classwork on Google Classroom the night before the class starts so that the student the next morning, as I said earlier, is somewhat flexible in when he wants to start. You don't have to wait until 9:00 AM. You just can go ahead if you wanted to start earlier. The teacher will just, if he is connecting The teacher will just, if he is connecting with the students through Google Meet, that will be between nine and two. Tests, quizzes and projects that will be graded are entered into Sycamore at the beginning of a module or unit. Coursework is mostly asynchronous, as Mr. Helwig also mentioned in his introduction. So no instruction through Zoom or Google Meet, but more so through videos, instructional videos and other ways of instructing. And then Google Meet sessions on the assigned days. The classwork is partly online and partly hard copy materials. We'd like to follow the example of elementary, trying to prepare packets of work that either students can, or parents can pick up from school or some other way to get that to you so that they can have also some off-screen time, but still meaningful in an academic sense. If you're a student outside of the country, we will make those materials available through PDFs. So parents can print those for students to work on. And then feedback of the teachers on the students' work for daily classwork and smaller projects within the day or the end of next day, depending on when the student actually asks a question or submits work. If it's like during the day, the teacher have, has a window of time to respond, like on the same day. If the student enters the work later in the day, say close to four PM, then the, the teacher is not required to respond the same day, obviously. And then by the end of the next day, the response and the feedback will be there for bigger assignments when the teacher needs more time to work through the assignments before the end of the next week, the, the work is given feedback on. Then the Google Meet tool is the preferred video conferencing tool. It, it's well-integrated with the Google Classrooms. And it's mainly meant for teacher-student engagement and student-to-student engagement. So the teacher can connect with the students and have students do exercises in smaller groups, provide feedback, review certain items of the learning content that was difficult for some or where students still have questions about. So they can use that time, the teachers can use that time in synchronous ways to, to connect with students and clarify. At least once a week in the allocated time slots, as I explained earlier. And then the office hours, when a teacher is available after school, a student can connect with the teacher by email or hangouts. But a teacher may also decide to plan a Google Meet session where students can opt in. And then the student, the teacher can explain certain elements, what was explained before already, but go in-depth a little bit more or clarify things that need some clarification or where students still have questions about. So either in small groups or individually, they can discuss that. And then the last one is community and communication. The advisory classes are an important part of that. In the, in the smaller groups with an advisory teacher, students connect on a weekly basis. And they really are, are expected to come online, have their camera on and their microphone on so that students can really connect with each other and with the teacher. Teachers communicate through Google Classroom, hangouts, email and Google Meet. And I will try to do a weekly video and/or email to, to start us off on a new week every time to keep that sense of we are middle school together alive for students and parents. Chapel will be held several times this coming semester, twice per quarter at least. But we're still finding a good mode. Hopefully, we can offer it more. And then their open door meetings, some middle school parents may remember those from previous years. I am wanting to continue those either virtually through a Zoom meeting or Google Meet's meeting or on campus. So this is in a nutshell, the, the middle school plan for distance learning. And I'm handing over now to Mr. John Barlow for High School Division.
Hey, thanks again, everybody, for taking the time to be here. We appreciate the opportunity to kind of explain what we've been working on and help you understand what this school year, or this semester at least, is going to look like. So as we were thinking about high school and how to put together a distance learning program that makes sense for high school students, there are some big pictures that we wanted to keep in mind as we made decisions. The first is accessibility. We want to make sure that every student and every family, no matter where they're at, has access to our learning platform and isn't going to be disadvantaged because they might not be in country. At the end of last year, we had several families leave country and do their learning from other places. Currently, because of travel restrictions, we have many more families, but also many more high school teachers who aren't in the country and are halfway around the world. And so we want to make sure that they can access their classes and the students can access the learning from the teachers. We wanted to be consistent and predictable. So we wanted to make sure that students and parents knew what to expect from the classes. Again, thinking back to fourth quarter, we just kind of gave teachers the freedom to choose whatever they wanted to do. And so from class to class, learning platforms, the rhythms of assignments and assessments and the learning for the week looked very different. We want to make that more consistent across classes so that when students come into a week and are planning on their online learning, they know what to expect from their classes on a week-to-week basis. And it, it matches more across their subjects. And then knowing that we were in this for the semester, we wanted to come up with something that was going to be sustainable, that wasn't going to cause teachers or families or students to burn out halfway through and not be able to continue. So that was kind of the principles that we had in mind as we made decisions about what high school learning was going to look like during this time. So a few of the, the big changes that we made. We're going to reduce the number of classes that students take. Usually, students take seven classes or eight with the music class. We're just going to knock that down by one. We found that moving to online or distance learning, lightning students load really helped them focus their attention on the things that they had on their plate. So their attention wasn't being split in eight different ways. And so we're just going to reduce that class a little bit. If you know your children and say, you know what, my son or my daughter, maybe he or she can handle five classes. And you think that's sufficient and that's enough, we're okay with that. Usually, we make high school students fill their schedules. And if they have, you know, two or three free periods, we say, no, take more classes, fill that up. In this case, in this instance, because it's a different context, if families decide that they want their kids to take fewer classes, we will allow that and that will be okay. And then also to be more consistent, we're going to have all of our high school classes operate similarly. And I'll get to what that looks like in a minute. Some classes specifically are performing arts classes from music, MPE classes, will look a little bit different in their weekly rhythms of assignments and learning activities. But most of our classes will operate very similarly so that there's less confusion from parents and from students about what to expect week to week. So some of the, the big picture guidelines that these are being given to teachers as well as we think about how we're planning our semester of our classes. All high school classes, we use the Google Classroom. That wasn't, that was kind of hit and miss before. It was up to teachers, but just so that all students know where to get the information for all their classes, we're going to say across the board, every high school course is going to use Google Classroom. The instruction is going to be asynchronous, meaning that students do not need to be online, watching live instructional videos or activities from their teachers. Everything can be done at their own pace and their own time, no matter what time zone you're in or what time zone your teacher is in. Each course will have its content released each week on Monday morning through a learning plan. And I'll explain what that looks like a little bit more in a second. But there'll also be live interaction with teachers on a regular basis with all of their students. And we think that's still important as Mr. Kolumrender said, we want to supplement our asynchronous learning with live interactions so that teachers can interact, so that students can interact with each other. So everyone's not just in their own little bubble of learning in their house at home. And then, as was mentioned a couple of times, we are working out a plan to have materials delivered to students who are in country. So if you're in country and you, your English class is reading a new novel, we can distribute novels to everybody. We can distribute textbooks. We can distribute assessments and then assessments can be returned the following week during pickup times. So we're working on that plan. That will work be for, you know, K to twelve for all of our students. So the learning plans, and I'll show an example on the next slide. Like I said, each Monday morning, Google Classroom, students will get the learning plans for all their classes. Those plans will have everything a student needs to do for the week. So when they look at their learning plan, say for their English class, it'll have all the instructional activities, any homework assignments, any reading, links to outside resources and any assessments that need to be done with, throughout that week. And each of those things will have a, include an estimated time for completion. So as you try to help your kids plan their week, you can look at how long it might take to do certain assignments for math or for English. And you can help them plan their day or their week so they know how they're distributing their time across the five days they've got. Most classes should expect about four to five hours of engagement per week. So that's not only the, what would be considered the in-class activities, but also outside, you know, the homework type of things, outside reading, assessments, all of the interaction a normal class would require, should be about four to five hours per week. Higher-level classes, grade eleven and twelve, AP or advanced placement classes, will require more than those four to five hours. But that just mirrors what's expected when we have on-campus courses anyway. When you and your kids get those learning plans for the week, for all their courses, they can work at their own pace. There's not going to be structured time where high school students are told you need to be doing a certain class at this certain timeframe during the day. You can work out your own pace. Students can decide when they work best. If they, if their brain does math best at eight o'clock at night, they can always save their math until eight o'clock at night. If there's somebody who wants to just sit down and crank out all of their English work for a week in a single day, they can sit down and do all their English in one day and then check it off and move on to the other subjects later in the week. So it's up to the students to plan out how they want to do that. And they can figure out how their brain works best, when they learn best and how they best operate to get things done. Because we had some time zone differences last year and people in and out of country, we did allow due dates to be pushed into the weekend. But we, we want to protect weekends and family time. And so each course, operating on a week-by-week basis, Friday night at nine PM Philippine time, will be the latest when all that work will be due. So students shouldn't have to work over the weekend on Saturday or Sunday. They should be able to do their plan for the week. And then they know by Friday night, they're done for the week and they're not having extra work that carries over. I can show an example of a plan here. This is one I put together for a, a sample class and what it might look like. So it would have the course, it'd have the week that they're working on, the dates. And then you can see that all the learning activities are listed there in the order they're meant to be done. So students are going to watch a video and then make a plan. They're going to go watch a video that explains how to use a discussion forum and then they actually go use a discussion forum. Links to outside videos, outside resources or articles or websites they need to reference, along with the assessments or assignments they should be doing, will all be listed on these plans. And if there's any specific due dates that are earlier than the Friday, they're listed in the, the FAR column there. And what's helpful, hopefully for you and your kids, as you're thinking through this, is that there are estimated times over on the left there for each of those activities. So if you're sitting down with your, your kid and you say, you know what, I need you to work for ninety minutes on social studies today, you can look at the time estimates with them and figure out, okay, that should get you down through that, you know, in this instance, that article on authority in the early church. So if you do all the things up to that one and complete them, that can be your social studies work for this today and we can move on to a different course. So we're hoping that including the times will really help families and students plan how to use the time well and make some choices about how they're spending time throughout the week. As I said, and was echoed, K through twelve, we think it's important that there is live face-to-face interaction between students and teachers. We want to make sure our instruction is available asynchronously, but we know it's important to have interaction. And so unlike last semester, when fourth quarter live interactions weren't required, we are going to require live conferencing between students and teachers for each of their courses. So if your kids are in high school, they will be interacting with their teacher real-time, face-to-face, cameras and microphones on for each of their courses on a regular basis. The structure for that will be kind of that students are meeting with teachers in small group, or teachers are meeting with students rather, in small groups of about four to six. These will be short meetings because the, it's not intended for this to be instructional time. The teacher is not going to be telling you how to factor a polynomial or explaining, you know, the Teapot Dome scandal in US history. These are times to check in with students to make sure they're making appropriate progress throughout the class, to maybe give some quick feedback, to allow student interaction. If you have a course where hearing them speak, if you're doing a language or something, that you can actually listen to them talk or they can interact and talk to each other. Or maybe if it's a class that requires demonstrating skills, they can demonstrate a skill for that. So these are meant to be shorter times. Because much of teachers' feedback comes from watching students' faces while instructing, quick questions that could be answered in class, you know, those informal interactions that we kind of take for granted when we're seeing each other face-to-face, none of that's happening. So it's really easy for students to start to, you know, slip through the cracks or fall behind. And so we want to make sure that teachers are keeping tabs on their students on a regular basis, that for each class, they're being asked how they're done, they're being checked up on, and they're being, you know, tracked throughout their coursework and their progress. A few other things for high school. Normally, by now, high school students have schedules of all the classes they've chosen to take for the year. They usually do that in May, but because this school year was so, we didn't know what to expect when in May, we haven't actually done that yet. And so high school students are getting a bit antsy about not knowing their schedule. So next week, hopefully on Monday by next week, a full course list of all the courses that are being offered this coming semester will be sent out to high school students, along with instructions on how they can choose the courses they want to take. And they'll have next week to choose them. And then we'll put together schedules in the following weeks so that it'll have them a week before classes start. We will be continuing our, our homerooms. So this are times when students are meeting with teachers in a completely non-academic setting. So our, our homeroom groups carry on through the years. And so, for instance, my homeroom had students, boys in grades nine through twelve last year. My seniors graduated, so I'll get some new freshmen this year. But then the other grades will stay with me. And so we will be meeting on a regular basis. Last year, homerooms were kind of optional, but we're, we're expecting them to happen this year. So again, students need to have the access and ability to video conference and meet with their homeroom teacher and their homeroom class members in that way on a regular basis. As Mr. Kolumrender said, we will have regular chapel sessions. We don't know quite what that looks like because we have an incoming chaplain who's covering grade six through twelve for middle school and high school. And he's not in country right now. So we're going to work with him on what his role looks like as a chaplain who's chaplaining a school from around the world and working out what his schedule and capacity is for putting together chapels and other spiritual activities for middle school and high school. So we'll let you know more about, we're committed to doing something and having them on some frequency. But we'll need to work with him in the coming weeks to figure out what exactly that looks like and we'll let you know. And then our student leaders, we have seven ex-co-chairs and eight house chairman who are working out ways to have other levels of student interaction throughout the semester. Because we want to, you know, not just have online school and online classes, but to try to have some sort of distance community and some levels of interaction that are outside just the academic classes and coursework that students are doing. So as has been said a couple of other times, there are things that we still need to figure out that are, we're not quite certain about yet. But hopefully that gives you kind of a, an overview of the structure that we're putting together for what, what's happening in high school.
All right. I just want to thank everybody for the questions that have been submitted and some comments. Just one of the questions I don't think will cover, it was about the SATs. And Mrs. Vilcon has put a response there in the chat box. So if you're concerned about the SATs, you can put a response there in the chat box. So if you're concerned about the SATs, you can read that at the bottom of the chat. So I've tried to organize the questions by category. So the first one is a general question. Any of the administrators could respond to this one. Is it possible for the kids to be required to wear school uniforms, especially on video calls?
I can speak to that. I think we have a student protocol in place. We're working on that still. But that is that writes up the expectations of students while being in distance learning. And the expectation is that you are prepared for class. And I'm not sure if the wording is already in there, but I would want to add there, if it's not there yet, the proper attire. So because that is, I think, the underlying desire that we all have that if you're well-prepared in decent clothing, then you're prepared for the day for the class. Not necessarily in your school uniform, but in proper clothing, not your pajamas.
All right, add to that, we do have 15% of our student body who will be new this year. And if they either aren't in country or can't have access to campus, that also means they don't have access to uniforms. And so we can say that you should be dressing, like Mr. Koenbrenner said, appropriately or nicely. But we can't require uniforms of students and families who haven't had access to be able to get uniforms.
Another general question, maybe Mr. Hellwood could answer this one. When will the semester calendar be available? We heard that there might be some changes.
The calendar should be on our website. It's, I think it was updated a few days ago. We made very few changes except to lay in the start of school. And so there is a Google Calendar that is on the website that is up to date. Then there should also be a calendar that shows the whole school year. So I know I talked with our IT individual on Monday and I think she posted it. And it's in the chat, the link is that Mr. Barler just put there.
Okay, next question is addressed at middle school. It seems that the starting time is a little bit late and encourages sleeping in late. Could there be a consideration for starting time at 7:30 AM perhaps for reading or reflection?
We have looked at the data like Mr. Hellwood said earlier, like what came back from the parent surveys and from what teachers experienced. There are several elements there. So one is that families with students in both elementary and middle school sometimes struggle a bit with supporting their children. So when they're working with their elementary kids and their middle school kids all at the same time, that's sometimes too much. So if there's a little bit of a staggered schedule in that sense, it would help these parents somewhat already. And the other element is the somewhat the freedom for students to start working at any time in the morning. There is not a start time when the day starts, like generally we start at nine to two, just to give an indication when the teachers are working and available. But the teacher is not necessarily coming online to say, okay, guys, everybody goes to their Google Classroom and do your work. The students can start at nine, but they also can start at eight or at seven or at six even because the work needs to be posted the day before. So what you as a family, what works for your family routine, that is what you could make work. So you could as a family decide like, guys, we start at eight with our classes or at whatever time you would like. And then the only thing that you have to take into account to is the scheduled Google Meet sessions during the day that can happen.
Another question for middle school, what is the purpose of the Friday catch-up?
So because students work on different paces, there's about 90 minutes of work per day, but some will maybe be done sooner than the 90 minutes per day. Others may some weeks be struggling with getting it all done within that time. So if sometimes you need more time for a project or some work, you can use that overflow Friday because there are no other classes scheduled except for the advisory and the reading time, then there's extra time available to catch up what you didn't do, what you couldn't finish earlier in the week.
Another general question just came in. Maybe I could jump in. The question says, do you yet know what conditions will need to be met for face-to-face classes to resume? President Duterte had the sonar, the State of the Nation address this week and he reiterated that there needs to be a vaccine in place for face-to-face classes. So that's what we know at this time. Okay, we have several questions for high school. So the first question is, will there still be a humanities type of class or will it be separated by subject?
There there still will still be humanities class where there is integrated subject for Bible history and English for grade nine students. What that looks like as far as the weekly course plans, I can't say that quite yet. We're working with the teachers to figure out whether it's best to split it up into three separate learning plans that the students would receive that they can work their way through. Or if one plan would be better. One plan means, you know, it's 12 to 15 hours of work all in one plan. That might be hard for freshman grade nine students to pace out and break up on their own. So I think we're kind of leaning towards breaking that up into three separate plans. But we're working on that right now because that course is designed to have the content integrated. So there are learning activities and assignments that fall under, you know, both Bible and English. And it might be hard to pull that apart and say this part's Bible and this part's English, but we're working on it. And we're committed to providing that instruction in a way that's going to be manageable for the grade nine students to process and work through.
Okay, next question for high school is, is it possible for our seniors to have a college orientation by the counselor? Are there new updates with standardized testing, new college exam dates, et cetera?
We do have an incoming guidance counselor and she, excuse me, is planning on doing some of the same college and university planning meetings that would normally happen with our guidance counselor with students one-on-one. So again, she's incoming and currently not in country. And so when she kind of gets a feel for the school year and what's going on, she'll begin those meetings and meet with students one-on-one to advise them on their college/university plans and help them, you know, know about what steps they need to be taking and walking them through that process as best she can from a distance. We are still uncertain, I guess, the other part of that was about standardized testing on how universities are flexing. And fortunately, on one end of the spectrum, North American universities are showing a lot of flexibility in how they're handling students coming through high school and entering their admissions process during this time. Their understanding of, you know, course requirements being changing and graduation expectations changing and schedules changing. Unfortunately, especially Korean universities are not being as flexible. And for the most part, the Korean universities are holding the same level of expectation that they had been in any other year. And then, you know, the Philippine school year being a little bit offset between those two. As far as I've heard so far, their cycle will stay the same. So as we know more, we can help advise students, but some of that is just uncertain still as universities in the Philippines are uncertain about what their futures look like and how they're going to be carrying out classes and learning in the coming year.
Okay, next high school question. How often are we weekly conferences?
We are hoping to start them out every week so that students will be meeting. Each teacher will be talking to each of their students every week. For some classes like P E and music, we know that's not going to keep up. We're probably going to move to every two or three weeks for those type of classes. And if we do find as we move throughout the semester that many students can, are tracking well without having a weekly conference with each teacher, we might pull back to every other week. But we're hoping to start out with an every week conference for each class, for each student.
Next high school question, are service hours still required?
No. If we can take some things off your plates, we will. And that's just one more level of, you know, a requirement that with students not being able to get out in the community and perform acts of service in the ways that we were able to before quarantine, it's just one more level of expectation and requirement that we figure we don't need to put on students during this time.
All right, next high school question. If AP, if students want to take AP courses that are not available, is it possible to have a study hall period where students can get credit through self-study?
The that's a weird question online because it doesn't need to be a study hall period. Students are always free in any year to take an AP course that we don't offer through a different provider to go to an online school or, you know, take it through a university or something. And they can then transfer that credit onto their Faith Academy transcript. So that process is available even when we have face-to-face classes. If your student is thinking about doing that or your kid's interested in that, I just please send me a quick email just so I can help make sure that your questions get answered and they're, you know, taking the course from an accredited provider and things like that, but it is an option.
Okay, there are a couple of concerns about the high school schedule. More of a statement than a question, but there's not a set beginning of school time. And there's a feeling that there's too much freedom for high school students with that. And that will high school be more like an independent study similar to homeschooling, but without a homeschooling provider?
There. As I said, we want to make sure everything's accessible for everyone. And we looked at numbers today and a third of our high school teachers are 12 to 15 time zones away from where we are currently. And so trying to run a schedule like we did last year where each class had an expected period means that those teachers on the other side of the world are staying up till three in the morning each night to participate in their classes. It also means that all the students who are in North America or Europe are staying up to the middle of the night every day to participate in their classes on a schedule. And so we wanted to remove that barrier and say, you know, we'll have individual conferences with teachers that teachers and students will schedule when is best for them. But we aren't keeping high school students to a specific time to say, this is when you need to be doing a certain class. That being said, as both the high school principal and the parent of a high schooler, I would encourage you as a family to set a specific time. If you're concerned that your kids are waking up too late, you as families have the freedom to say, kids, we're getting up at seven o'clock and you're going to be starting school by eight o'clock every morning. Please feel the freedom as parents to do that and to say that. The fact that the school is not putting a specific schedule on your family and your kids does not mean that they don't have to have any schedule or any plan for how and when they're doing schoolwork. That will be one of the introductions that we give to students in our introduction to the semester and how we're going to operate is that we're going to encourage them to, with their families, set a schedule so that they're, they know they're going to wake up at a certain time, start school at a certain time, take breaks at certain times maybe. So just because there's freedom in how they're going to do their coursework for the different classes doesn't mean there can't be a schedule to the school day and when they're actually getting their work done.
Okay, next question is for both middle school and high school. Will the assessments be at scheduled times where all students are taking them at the same time?
Again, for accessibility in high school, no, for the most part. That a student who is in the Philippines, in Korea, in France, in Canada, they won't all have to be taking their test at the same time.
Yeah, the same applies to middle school and we also are wanting to look into the way we do assessments, not necessarily only looking at checking the presence of knowledge, but more application and how they work through certain ideas and learning content, which requires a different style of assessing if a student got if he got the learning targets in.
Okay, and general question, are all teachers still the same as last year since the classes are online? Is it possible to get some teachers from other countries?
For high school at least, no, many of the teachers are changing. Actually, a good number are changing this year from what we have, many teachers finished their service at faith at the end of last year. And so we had, I feel like it's about eight incoming high school teachers. And because of travel restrictions, only one of them is currently in this country. So actually, we do have many teachers who are all over the world who will be teaching and instructing their classes from Australia and North America and Korea. So we do have teachers from other countries who will be teaching from other countries in other time zones.
There was a follow-up question to the assessment question. Will assessments for middle school and high school need a proctor?
Some high school assessments will, I can answer that. That'll be partially dependent on how teachers run their assessments and what types of assessments are being given. So it depends on the assessment in the class. Some will, some will not.
Yeah, same applies to middle school.
Question for middle school, there's a concern about using Google Hangout during school hours. Last semester, it was a distraction, especially classmates were sending messages to the whole class during school time. So the parents had to turn it off. How can we address this issue? The kids are sending messages frequently.
Yeah, I've seen the question. The Google Hangouts is not used for instruction. What it was usually mostly used for, as far as my experience last semester was trying to catch up with a student, for example, like, hey, where you're at, how are you doing? Or if there was missing work, I can try to send an email that got, I think, lost in the amount of emails in their inbox. And Google Hangouts was the preferred way for students to connect. Students can always use during the day any type of chat app to connect with each other. So that goes back to the expectations and the honor code that we want to introduce and together with the students decide like, what are you wanting to get out of this semester? Because it's going to be challenging for you. There's more responsibility for you to stay on top of your work and to give it the best you got. So it is addressed there, but it has to be a decision of the student to say, you know what, I'm going to go for it. And I'm trying to to be at least distracted as possible by these tools that are, because they are working on screen. So there's always the temptation in a sense to just like zone out a little bit for a while. That's also part of like during instruction times, that's not so much done synchronously but asynchronously. So watching a video is a different experience. You watch it at your own time. So during that time, you would not connect necessarily with another student on Hangouts or any other chat app. I hope that answers the question a little bit.
Okay, and what appears to be our last question. Will the school provide an email invitation to middle school students for their Google meets?
Maybe you heard me say in the presentation earlier that Google Meet integrates well with the Google Classroom. So actually, when you are signed up for a classroom as a So actually, when you are signed up for a classroom as a student, there's in the, in the top banner that has the title of the class. There's also a link for your Google Meet session, and that's always the same link. So you don't have to find it anywhere, it's always there on top.
All right, thank you for the questions, everyone, and I'll turn it back to Mr. Hellwood.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for your, for attending this meeting, and your questions are excellent. And your feedback has been very helpful in us, to us in planning for our distance learning protocol. And I think one of the things that we have learned from fourth quarter is being able to use this as an opportunity to work with our kids on how to kind of set expectations for themselves, how to follow through a schedule. And that's, those are the types of things that we are going to work with them on. And that's why we have a balance between asynchronous and synchronous instruction, is to be able to offer some flexibility with the timing of our lessons, but then also have times for teachers to check in with your students, with our students. And I think that the combination of that will help them become more independent learners, but will also help them as we navigate through distance learning. I am so grateful for our community, thank you for your support. I think I will close the session with prayer. If you have additional questions that come up later, please do not hesitate to email the division principal, or you can email me. As we mentioned before, we really want to be as clear as possible with our communication, be able to address any of the concerns that you have as we move forward. So let us pray. Dear God, I thank you so much for Faith Academy. I thank you for the many ways that you have blessed our school. And you look back at our history and you just see other challenges that Faith Academy has gone through. And it's just been evident that your hand has been in each of those situations, and we are excited to see how you're going to work through this situation. And Lord, I ask that you had continued to give us wisdom and guidance as we plan for our year. And I thank you that we have this amazing opportunity to work with students to be able to help them develop as young men and women. I thank you that we are able to be a part of their lives, and I ask that you would just continue to give us wisdom as we move forward. In your name I pray, amen. Another real quick announcement before we end, I will put a link to this video, it's been recorded. I'll put it in my update this week and also have it on the website. In addition to, we will provide a PDF copy of our presentations. If you want to go back and look at the notes, they'll be there for you. Okay, thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you, guys.